Hello, everyone, and welcome to Let's Pod This. My name is Andy Moore. I am your host. This is our first week of a new format for the podcast. As a reminder, each week we'll visit with someone from inside the Capitol, such as a legislator, or a staffer, or other statewide elected official. And we'll also visit with someone from outside the Capitol, such as an advocate, a policy wonk, most importantly, regular, everyday folks, just like you. So, we really want to use this podcast as a way to help listeners connect with other listeners, to share your knowledge and experiences, and help kind of expand the breadth of knowledge and experience that we all have about going to the Capitol, and about being an advocate, and about participating in democracy here in Oklahoma, so that we all get better. Iron sharpens iron, right? And for many of us, this is brand-new stuff, and we're not sure what we're doing sometimes, and we're learning as we go. And so, we really want to bring some experience and some knowledge from those that do it all the time, and those that are brand-new to it as well, and kind of share that all together. So, today, on this week's episode, we're going to sit down with a local guy named Scott Melson. Scott was, like me, was new to this whole being involved in politics thing last year, and he is now, he's been involved with us for about a year and a half, and he's now the Vice President of our Board for Let's Fix This. So, we're going to talk to him a little bit about how and why he decided to go beyond the ballot box, to do, to find out some about the unexpected things that he's learned, and why he thinks it's important for everyone else to get involved as well. Then, later on in the episode, we're going to have our first installment of Meet the Legislature with State Senator David Holt. This is an interview that I did with him last year during session, and I am recycling it now because we hadn't posted it yet. So, that's convenient for me, and hopefully informational for you. First, before we get to those things, a quick recap about what's happened since we recorded our last episode. So, a really, a couple of really important things. One, the State Supreme Court upheld the bill passed by the legislature involving sales tax on new vehicles. And so, what was in place, there was a 1.25% sales tax that was in place, but there was also another exemption on that that effectively like erased that. And so, they didn't pass a new tax, they just removed the exemption. They fixed the glitch, if you will. And so, that effectively adds a 1.25% tax on new vehicles that wasn't there before. So, if you buy a new vehicle, you'll be paying more tax than you were last year. However, that's a, you know, no one likes paying any more taxes than we absolutely have to. But, we do get something out of it. We get roads, you get bridges, you get healthcare, and at least a little bit, where we could definitely use some more. But, for this particular tax, it adds $123 million to the next fiscal year. And this should be a recurring source of revenue, which our state desperately needs. So, that's the first important thing that's happened since then. And if you remember, prior to our last episode, the State Supreme Court had overturned the cigarette fee, cigarette tax bill, and that left a $215 million budget hole in our, in our, in our budget for this year. And that budget hole prompted the governor to go ahead and actually issue a call for a special session. So, the legislature will be coming back to the Capitol in just a few days. We're recording this on Friday, the 22nd. Then, we back on Monday, the 25th, to start that special session. And she issued the call with a three-fold goal. So, the first goal is to fill that $215 million budget hole that was left by the cigarette fee being unconstitutional. Two, she is asking the legislature to find some recurring revenue to, so we don't get into this mess, into this mess over and over again every year, like we've been doing. And three, she asked the legislature to, while you're at it, please find a way to fund a teacher pay raise. So, this, of course, means that the cigarette tax is back on the table. And just today, this afternoon, the governor issued a statement saying that she will veto any bill that contains cuts to state agencies. And there's been some rhetoric, some comments from both sides of the aisle, both Republicans and Democrats, that, well, you know, if we can't get the cigarette tax passed here in the legislature, we'll just send it on out to vote at the people. And the governor's statement said, listen, guys, that's not an option, because if that happens, the earliest it could go into effect is next June, which is the very last month of the fiscal year. That does us no good to fix this giant budget gap we have right now. So, basically, she said, no, no, you pass that cigarette tax on day one, everyone vote for it, you all know you want it, just go ahead and pass it, and then come up with some additional revenue that actually, that actually funds the state. So, we'll see what happens. I have, I have high hopes, and then lower expectations of what's going to happen. So, should be an interesting week. Because of that, I do want to say, a big announcement you may have already seen, hopefully on social media, or on our email mailing list, is that on Monday, we will be there at the Capitol. We're going to get together. Now, I'll be there, hopefully many of you will be there as well, to try to have a special session Capitol Day. We're going to try to visit with legislators, talk to them, find out what they're thinking, how they're planning to vote, and why, and really encourage them to vote however it is that you hope that they vote. They're your legislators. So, I'm going to talk to mine about how I hope they vote. I'm going to try to. If they're not there, I'm going to talk to their assistants. I'm going to leave a note. I will follow up with an email, and maybe a phone call later. But, I want to do what I can. Really, it's not that hard to send an email and a phone call. I could do that from my phone in the parking lot of the Capitol if I needed to. You could do it this weekend. But, I want to make sure that, that my elected representatives and senators understand where I'm coming from, and my perspective, and, and hope that they get enough other calls from people who agree with me. That may not be the case, but I'm going to do my part, right, to try. And I hope that you do, too. Okay. So, let's take a quick break, and when we return, our interview with a local advocate, Scott Melson. Now, we're going to sit down with current Vice President of the Let's Fix This Board, my friend, Mr. Scott Melson. Scott, how are you?
I'm doing great, Andy. How are you?
I'm good, good. Thanks for letting me join you in your living room here today, and do this little interview. So, you and I first met at one of our, one of our very first kind of, I'll call it an info and training session, but it really was, it was kind of us trying to figure out what we're doing before our very first Let's Fix This event in April of 2016. What, we had like a training thing at the Waters Edge Winery, and people just came who wanted to learn more about how to get involved in what was going on. How did you, prior to that, how did you find out about that?
So, like, many things in life, I have to credit my wife, Ashley. Ashley saw that you had put a post on Facebook. I think, as I recall, you had been talking with some friends in your living room, and said, man, like, we just, we just need to go to the Capitol, we just need to fix this, and created a Facebook event, and it got a lot of traction, a lot of likes. And we saw the meeting, and we said, you know, I think there's definitely some stuff that needs fixing. So, we showed up to see what we could do.
Sure. Had you and Ashley been involved in political stuff prior to Let's Fix This?
No, not, not anywhere other than, other than voting.
Okay.
Not, not any part of your organized, you know, organized effort. Ashley works in the nonprofit world, and I'm in healthcare. And so, we both had done a little bit with kind of our respective, you know, lobbying arms, trying to stay kind of engaged and up to date with what was happening, but nothing in terms of civic engagement beyond that.
Okay. So, like, voting, like, phone calls, maybe, or?
Right, right.
Exactly, exactly. What was different about this? What made you decide to get involved at the time that you did?
You know, I think for, for me personally, politics is, is something I've always just been interested in. And so, Let's Fix This was an opportunity to kind of, you know, become involved with something that was new, that sounded exciting, and it was an opportunity to engage in a way that not really, I felt like anyone else was, was offering. Additionally, we were at that time, and still are at a point, in local politics and local government here in Oklahoma, that I think really is kind of beyond the pale, in terms of how dysfunctional it has become, how many problems there are at both municipal and state levels. And we saw Let's Fix This as an opportunity to try and really become involved with addressing that.
Did you ever feel like giving up?
No, I don't think so. I mean, there's definitely times when it's frustrating, you know, you, you talk with legislators, and you make phone calls, you write letters, you show up at the Capitol, and you feel like there's a lot of traction. You know, we've saw at least a couple of our Capitol Days last year, going into evening sessions. I mean, the whole gallery is full of people that are clearly invested, and advocating for, you know, more funding, whether it's for a teacher pay raise, or whether it's more funding across the board, or more funding for healthcare. And to feel like that message is both heard and ignored, is definitely frustrating, but that's why we got to keep plugging away.
Sure. So, you kind of saw a need, and you said, I've got to get involved with this now. Like, there's a way that seems like it maybe will be effective, or at least you got to do something.
Right.
Well, that's, that's good. That's why this whole thing started.
Yeah.
How, what have you learned? Like, what are some of the biggest things that you've learned kind of along the way?
You know, I think probably for me, the biggest thing is as how easy it is. And when I say how easy it is, I don't necessarily mean actually affecting change, because that, as you know, can be and is a long, hard struggle. But, in terms of the actual doing of the work.
Back door open.
It is. It's, it's very easy. Legislators are eager to meet with constituents. They're certainly willing to meet with constituents, even the ones that may not be quite as eager. They're accessible. I had this vision of, I had this vision of legislators as being, you know, locked away in a, you know, chamber, or in their offices, surrounded by aides and security, and people that are much more important than I am wanting to talk to them. They're certainly busy, but they're right there at 23rd and Lincoln. And there's opportunity for anybody that wants to go talk to them to do that.
Right. I think that's the thing for me, that I think we all have like a perception of what the Capitol is like in Washington DC, where it is significantly more like locked down. There are multiple staff members for each, you know, each congressman or Congresswoman. And, and it's a whole different vibe. And, I mean, rightly so, there's, you know, but at the state level, yeah, like, the first time that we went, you can just, it really is, we own the building. You can walk right in.
Right.
They're busy, so you don't really get to see them face-to-face, but you have an opportunity to schedule a meeting and, and hang out and wait, or whatever, and they're all very accommodating.
And I think part of what, part of my learning experience has been that because of this, not only are they accessible, which makes it possible for us to go meet with them and have our opinions heard, but the same reason they're accessible is also what makes it necessary for us to do that, right? I was struck by the fact that most of the, most of the members of the state legislature have at most one legislative assistant. There are several members that share a legislative assistant between two members. I had another, another part of my vision of, of the government was that these folks are, you know, experts in healthcare policy, they're experts in education policy, they're experted, and some of them are very, you know, well-read and experienced, and have a certain amount of expertise in some of the areas that they're tasked with governing. But, no one person can have all of that knowledge. And at the state level, they don't have access to the staff and resources to become expertly informed on all of these things, right? Like, so if we go up there, five constituents go and say, hey, there's this bill, and here's how it's going to affect me and people that I know in my work-life and my personal life. It could be those five meetings that sway their vote.
Right.
Because there's just, you know, there's certainly lobbyists telling them how to vote, but they don't have access to this, you know, pantheon of staff, doing tons of research, and background, and filling them in on the details, and what the law-reaching effects are going to be. It's really just people going and talking to them and saying, hey, this is what we hope you would do.
Right. Bonus points for the word "pantheon."
I mean, it's an SAT word.
I think it is. Yeah. So, a great example of that is, I had spoken with Senator Adam Pugh from Edmond about a bill related to healthcare. You and I both work in healthcare, and this is this last year. And Adam's not a healthcare guy, it's not his background. And I happened to be up there, I think, showing someone else how to find their legislator's office one day, and Senator Pugh saw me in the hallway and stepped down and said, hey, Andy, can you talk to me about this? And really kind of asked me some questions about what that bill does, and why it's important, and all that. And so, we had a nice, like a good little conversation right there in the hallway. And I was, it kind of struck me as odd, but yeah, because they don't have experts in all these policy fields. It's not, it's not like the West Wing where everyone is well-versed in everything.
I was, I was just going to say, I had this picture of like the West Wing, where, you know, all the legislatures have a Josh Lyman, a Sam Seaborn, and Tully Ziegler, who, between the three of them, are experts at, you know, apparently everything.
Right, yes. Including like medieval literature.
Right.
Yeah.
The nuances of the difference between Sunni and Shia.
Right, right. But yet, they don't know about Wolf Highway going to, for Pluie, and, you know, they, something big black.
Poor Pluie, poor Pluie.
Yeah, poor Pluie. So, it sounds like for you, it's been a positive experience, and that you've, have learned a lot, including maybe some surprising things.
Absolutely. There's no question. It's been a great experience. And, you know, I was thinking about, you know, kind of, you know, what we might talk about today, and kind of reflecting on what, what being part of Let's Fix This has been like. And, you know, you said earlier, like, it really is, it's, it's our house. And it is, it's our house, it's our building, because it's our government, right? I mean, the, the Constitution spells it out, right? We, the people, like, this is, they work, they work for us. That doesn't mean that we have the right to go up there and be belligerent and demanding, and, you know, be disrespectful, but it does mean that we absolutely have the right to go have our opinions heard and have a voice. I, for a long time, felt like that really the only way I could be civically engaged was to vote, or run for office, or, you know, really, I mean, those were really kind of the two things. And those are certainly two great things to do. But, there are all of these other things that you can do in between. You don't have, you don't have to run for a senate, you don't have to run a campaign, you don't have to, you know, you don't have to be involved in advocacy at the professional level with a nonprofit, or some other lobbying organization. You really can just go sit down and talk.
Yeah. It's been, for me, I think one of the most exciting things about Let's Fix This so far, and this whole experience, has been seeing so many new people come to the Capitol every time, and learn these same things. And so, I try to, you know, like, circle back and talk to them before they leave, and say, what did you find out? What did you learn? What was your experience like? And having people be like, you know what, this was, well, for one, not as scary as I thought. And two, I've done it once, I'm going to do it again, because it really is accessible. And, and now I kind of have a better idea of how to make a difference, and what I can do next time to maybe be more influential or compelling. And just, you know, like, you know, I'm big about the power and the value of personal relationships between everybody, but certainly with your state legislators, and to, so to, to meet them more than just once. You know, like, often we vote for them, and then we don't know what they look like. I mean, you see a name on a page, so getting to meet them, and for them to meet you, and they're expecting for you just to kind of spout off some things. And so, I've started to encourage people to ask a question first of like, how many kids do you have? Or, do you have kids? Or, you know, what's your favorite part of the district? Or something to let the legislator know that, that people are interested in more than just coming and like blowing up at them about something, because that's not really going to change anything.
Absolutely. I mean, the, the very first Capitol Day that we did, I was fortunate, I live, I'm fortunate in that I live in a district where my representative and I, Jason Dunnington, he's a fantastic representative, we also agree on virtually everything. So, I can go to the Capitol and, and meet with Representative Dunnington, and, and we can talk, but it's really more like, yeah, I think so, too. Yeah, you think so, yeah, I think so. Awesome. You know, it's, there's, there's not a whole lot of influence. But, I, I did, my very first Capitol Day, got to meet with the representative from another part of the state, Representative LaPac, Mark LaPac, who's from Clearmore. And we sat down in his office for, I mean, at least an hour, it might have been close to an hour and a half. I mean, it just, I mean, we talked about some bills that were coming up, we talked about some bills that had passed, and bills that were going to come up for vote. But, we also spent time talking about, you know, what I do for a living, what he did for a living, what his family's like, what my family's like, what it's like living in Clearmore versus what it's like living in Oklahoma City, just having a conversation. And that really helped me not only to see, you know, how accessible the legislators can be, but also to, to kind of humanize a little bit, and to see that even someone like Representative LaPac, with whom I would disagree about any number of things, in terms of how the government should or shouldn't function, and what it should and shouldn't do. But, we actually do have a lot in common. And we, most importantly, both want the best things for the state of Oklahoma, even though he and I might not agree with how to get there.
Right.
And I think that that's a really important lesson I've taken away, too, is I think that no matter what side of the political, the political spectrum you fall on, as ugly as the discourse has become, both locally and nationally at times, it's very easy to see people on the opposite side of the divide as just completely alien, just anathema to anything that I would think or believe, or whatever. And when you sit down with them, I think most of the time, you find out that's just not the case.
Right. We're all Oklahomans.
Right.
And really, I mean, I think we all kind of want the same thing, and we're maybe arguing about how to get there. And I was talking with someone earlier this afternoon about how it's weird that so many of these issues have become partisan issues, when they never have been, or they shouldn't be.
Right.
Like, the public education is somehow a partisan issue, or making our state a healthier place is somehow a partisan issue. Those kinds of things just seem really forward. And I think a lot, my, my sense from a lot of legislators, again, in both chambers and both sides of the aisle, is that especially this session, the spring, everyone was like, whoa, what happened to us here?
Yeah.
And you've seen, I've seen some concerted efforts from, from several members, and some of the leadership saying like, hey, let's, let's come at this a different way. And like, let's get back to what we used to be, where we are a team, and we all play different roles, and maybe we have different ideas about how to execute a few things. But, if we keep, if the goal is to push the state forward to a more prosperous, prosperous, a more successful, a healthier place, that is good for all people, then I think we'll see a lot better gains that way, so.
No, I, I agree 100%. And talking, I, I think you're right on the money in terms of what your kind of assessment of the general mood is heading into, you know, at the end of session last year, at Sunny Die, and then, you know, heading into special session now, I think you're right on the money, that there is pretty widespread sentiment that a lot of things happened, and that, you know, things kind of went away at the end of last session that didn't need to. And the hope is that maybe that doesn't have to happen again.
Hmm.
Hope it doesn't.
Right, right. All right. So, before we kind of wrap up here, next week is the start, maybe the finish of the special session.
Indeed.
So, we haven't had one since, I think, 2013. Any predictions of how you think? And we haven't spoken about this yet.
Right.
If you have any predictions for what you think might happen with the, with the state budget?
I, I, I know what I think will happen, and I know what I hope will happen. I think they're two different things. I hope that there will be meaningful, meaningful revenue bills passed. I personally would be an advocate of seeing gross production tax restored to somewhere between 5% and 7%. I think 7% would be ideal, but 5% would be acceptable. I think income, the income tax cuts that we've passed over the last several years, I think that those need to be restored. I think if we do that, that would go a long way. I think what will happen is that I think they'll try for the cigarette tax again, excuse me, fee. They'll try for the, the smoking cessation fee.
Well, I think now they can go ahead and call it tax now.
Pass it constitutionally. Right. I think they'll try the cigarette tax again. I've heard rumors that they're going to try and borrow some money from the rainy day fund to fill some of the other gaps. And then, I expect that they'll get as far as they can with, you know, those two things. And then, there'll be some cuts kind of spread across the board. That's what I think will happen. I hope it doesn't.
Right, yeah.
That's what, it's kind of the rumblings that I'm hearing.
Right, sure. I, I'm probably with you on all those things. I'm, I'm curious to see what happens, and, and was just trying to read today some, I'll say, expert opinions from folks that are more involved in this than I am, and kind of stay, have their ear to the ground in different ways. So, I think the uniqueness of our political situation in the state, and certainly in the country, the string of resignations we've had this year has, and the, the news the last couple of weeks about Senator Shorty, and some of the stuff that's happened, as we started to learn, I think that has caused a lot of folks to reflect on where we're at as a state, and certainly where our state government's at. And so, I don't know.
I hope so. Yeah.
I hope so. Yeah. It's been a, it's been a weird week.
It's been, it's been, yeah, it's been, absolutely. Yeah, some of the things that, how about, you know, you mentioned Senator Shorty, and just some of the things that we've learned, it really, it's, it's a little, it's a little mind, mind-boggling.
True.
And, yeah.
All right. So, maybe last thoughts, Scott. Anything that you would recommend, if you were, if someone was asking you about how to get involved, or about Let's Fix This, what's your 30-second elevator pitch of why they should get involved?
You know, I think that there is, they're saying your strength in numbers, and I think that that certainly can be true in the right situation. But, I also think there's comfort in numbers. And I know for me, showing up that first time, when there was, gosh, what, 60, 70 people that showed up, it's like, right, it's, it's not just me here in my suit and tie going to go talk with one of the legislators. There's a bunch of people who feel the same way.
Yeah.
And that they had a lot of the same trepidations that I did the first time. And so, being able, being able to come with us, with several of us that have gone now, that have a comfort level, that have a rapport, I think that Let's Fix This is a great way for someone who's never been to the Capitol before, to come for the first time. I think it takes away some of the, you know, kind of awe, and, and, you know, the intimidation factor.
Sure.
So, I think that's one thing. I think, you know, I think that between, you know, all of the folks that are involved with us at various levels, I think that we have a lot of good relationships at the Capitol. So, I think that we have a, a pretty kind of good feel for how things are going, and how things are progressing, or not progressing, as the case may be. And so, I think that puts us a position where we can, when we put out a call to action, like, hey, we need people to show up at this day to advocate, I think that, I think that there's merit to that. When we say, hey, there's going to be a late session tonight where they're debating this bill, and here's the impacts, you can come advocate for it, you can come advocate against it, whatever your position is. But, just come talk about it, because this is important. I think that people can know that we're not just saying that as a way to, you know, boost traffic to our website, or say we had 200 people show up at an event. We're saying it because we, we know kind of what's happening, and we want people to be involved and have their voices heard.
Right. Yeah, I think, so I think one of the really cool things is that we've had people come to our events that have widely different opinions on certain issues, and it's great to see, I mean, like, voters have conversations about stuff, and, and just civil discourse about, you know, there was some, we had that coffee meetup at Elemental Coffee back in the spring, and there was people discussing the, the proposed fuel tax at the time. And the guy who owns like a trucking company was against it. Well, that makes a lot of sense, you know? And so, he was talking to some of the folks who live in the metro that barely drive. And, and so, helping, having them communicate about their, each of their perspectives, I think everyone walks away better informed from that. So, it was really interesting.
Absolutely, yeah. I, I, I should add, just kind of to piggyback on what you're saying, I think the fact that we are, you know, that we're a non-partisan, like, we, we're not advocating for, you know, policy X or policy Y, we're not advocating for Democratic policies, Republican parties. We're advocating for people to come be involved with their government.
Yeah.
Right? Decisions are made by those who show up.
That's right.
So, we So we trying to get people to show up.
Man, it would be, I always, I've said before, like, it'd be awesome if, like, it, well, if everyone just showed up to vote, first of all. Great, um, but like, I think most people get frustrated with the way that. Government runs, but most people don't do anything else, like you said early on, uh you've got to vote. But then there's so much more you could do and and that's, it's like, I don't know, it's like starting a lawnmower but not ever pushing it around, like, well, yeah, your yard looks terrible. Because you didn't actually mow it, like, you gotta do your due diligence.
And I think one of the, I think one of the most valuable things that let's fix this can do. And is doing is showing people that those other things do make a difference. Like having that voice does matter, are we gonna, you know? Does it always change the final outcome? Not necessarily, but it matters, like it's, it's heard.
Sure.
Um, and I was, I'm glad that you said that, like, cause I was, I obviously I want people to come to our events, I want people to be involved. Um, the more people walking around with bright red buttons at the Capitol, the better. But regardless, if I could say one thing to anyone who listens, it's please, please, just vote. Um, we had a election for school board chair in Oklahoma City, um, uh, uh, a few months ago. Um, there were thirteen precincts, I believe, at the initial election, where not one person voted.
That's crazy.
Not a single person voted. Um, we were working on a campaign trying to encourage people to come and vote for their runoff, um. And there was a young man that walked by our booth and um said, hey, there's, you know, school board elections on Tuesday. And he was like, oh, sorry, I I don't care, it just doesn't matter. You're, look what, you're you're mid twenties, right, um, I don't know if you have a job, but I assume that you do, you pay taxes of some sort, certainly, right? Your tax dollars are funding that you may not like, cause he said he didn't care because he didn't have kids.
Right.
I don't have kids, right, kids, kids are great, I love them, I don't have any of my own, but this is like, we're talking about educating. The next generation, the people that are gonna take this over from us.
Right.
Like, how your tax dollars are being spent.
Right.
Like, all of these things affect you. You know, like, who's running the school board, who sits on the board, like, who's in the governor's office, who your state legislature is, these things. Matter, even if it's not always tangible in your day to day life, they matter, so if nothing else, please vote.
Right, I, um, yeah, man, you gotta vote. I sat down with uh someone who's running for county commissioner earlier, cause I know zero about that position. Found out they're over like the county jails and, okay, which Oklahoma County is a huge deal. And uh that there's three county commissioners for every county regardless of size or population, so that's. Um, two hundred and twenty-ish county commissioners across the state. Who have a enormous amount of influence on how our state operates and uh no one knows anything about it, I'm like, whoa. Um, and they make decent money too, like our tax payers are, tax dollars are paying their salaries, so, um, that was really. It was really informational meeting, so I'm gonna go do some more research, cause I wanna make sure that we pick the right person for this.
Yeah, it absolutely, it matters.
Yeah.
And we've got, next year's a big year, we've got um some important ballot initiatives that come up next year, we've got a gubernatorial race. Um, obviously, the usual slate of uh state house and senate races, everybody, everybody in the house and a third of the senate.
Yeah.
Um, and this is all just locally, to say nothing of what's happening at the federal level.
Right.
Um, um, I think, I think the other thing is, and it does, it takes a little bit of time and a little bit of work. Um, I think that if we can encourage people, and let's fix this plays a role here as well, to try and be informed. Pick, pick whatever sides you want, take whatever position makes the most sense to you, but pick it based on. You know, wherever you get your information, whether that's, you know, local news, national news. You know, websites that have good information that you trust, but I think that sometimes people walk into the voting booth trying to make a good decision. And they're in intimidated by these, you know, all the state questions and uh. You know, the number of candidates for things like county commissioner or positions that are a little bit more esoteric, um, and and. They get intimidated and have a bad experience voting that time and just decide it's too much work and they don't wanna, they don't wanna go back.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I encourage people to kind of start like what you're doing, go home tonight and read about county commissioners.
Right.
Uh, and now you've just informed me that I need to learn more about county commissioners.
Reading about uh state positions, so, well, hey, Scott, uh, thanks so much for letting me come over. Thanks to Ashley who's across the room for letting me come into your house too and to June of the cute dog that's chewing her toy here.
Pitter pattering in the background.
That's right. Okay, up next we have our interview with Senator David Holt. Senator Holt, could we start by maybe you telling us about your district and where it's located?
Senate District Thirty, but of course, nobody knows the numbers, um, so it's, it kind of starts in Quail Creek, which is where I live and then has a lot of the village. And then has Lake Hefner as it kind of starts to meander to the west and the south and then it has. A lot of war acres, most of Bethany, and then it kind of starts to wander back to the east and has uh. The Old Shepherd Mall and all the way over to about Penn and and Sixteenth, um, it's, it's oddly shaped, it's kind of a snake. Uh, through northwest Oklahoma City.
Okay, great, so what made you interested in running for public office?
Uh, so I've always been somebody interested in in sort of being a part of things bigger than myself, I mean, I ran for, you know. All the student council offices since the sixth grade, I was, you know, student council president at Wiley Post Elementary and and really, nothing's ever changed since then and. And um, I um, I went to college at George Washington University and 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 got a degree in DC and got a degree in. Political science and so I kind of knew, you know, that this was the life for me and 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 I think the 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 core reason is. I like to help people and I like to, you know, be a part of what makes the community move forward and, you know, from a. From a day to day perspective, it's really interesting and diverse work, you know, I mean, you get to kind of follow your passions and kind of work on the things that you're interested in. Um, and so, you know, ever since college, I've worked for the speaker, I worked for the president, I worked. Uh, for the mayor as his chief of staff and and I always probably knew that I might um run for office myself. Um, I didn't necessarily have a, have it quite figured out or have any master plan, but when um. My senator was term limited in two thousand and ten and it was the seat where I had grown up, it was kind of, as I described, sort of Putnam City Schools area where I had gone to school. Um, that just made sense uh to represent the people and places that had made me who I am and so. I ran um in two thousand and ten for the senate and of course now I'm running for mayor, but. Um, all of it goes back to my desire to to help people and make my community a better place and and, you know, everybody should do that on some level. Now, it's probably uh not realistic for everybody to run for office, but I wish that everybody could contribute just a little bit to. These things that that I work on every day.
What's your favorite thing about your district?
Um, well, you know, I mean, of course, the people, I mean, it's, 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 it's great people in northwest Oklahoma City and um. Uh, and they're, they're, they're my people, you know, that's where I was, I was raised. Um, you know, if you're talking about geographic or or attractions, you know, uh geographic landmarks. Um, you know, Lake Hefner is obviously a, probably the obvious um great amenity and I also have. The East Bank of Lake Overholster, which is probably underrated uh and and should get more attraction, but. We have a lot of fun things to do, but we are also essentially a district of neighborhoods, you know, the um. The big difference, uh, one of the many differences between rural and urban legislators is, you know, I just represent neighborhoods, you know, rural legislators represent counties. You know, everywhere, as far as they can see is their district, for me, it's like, you know, if you're in a car for more than two minutes, you've probably left my district, you know, so. Um, you know, so it's, it's sometimes hard to stitch together a sense of community in the thirtieth senate district of Oklahoma. Because it's, it's really just portions of a much larger city and it's mostly just houses, you know, but we do have some fantastic. Um, attractions and and obviously Lake Hefner is probably the top of that list.
Why aren't there more regular people involved in state government?
Oh, gosh, well, I mean, lots of reasons, they uh, obviously people are living their lives. Oklahoma is sort of noted, I think, for its lack of political activism, uh, they've actually been studies that have sort of demonstrated between voter turnout. And donations and everything else, we're just one of the least political states. Um, that probably means people are happy and that's fine, but um I think um. We're starting to see the last few years in the legislature what happens when people check out of the process and and a very limited number of people. Are making the uh election decisions and so um. I have been a strong advocate for for higher voter turnout and and trying to work from a policymaker's perspective on how we could get more people engaged in the process. Um, you know, so, so to answer the question of why people aren't engaged, I mean, one reason I think is, is that we have made a system. Uh, for electing particularly state legislators that you have to have an almost superhuman level of interest in to participate in. Um, you know, to elect a state senator requires up to three different elections, a primary, a runoff and a general election. And that's a lot to ask of a modern person, you know, to vote three times on three different days and. We also, you know, don't market the election particularly well and we create and we also, it's sort of invitation only, you know, you don't know. If you're gonna be even eligible to vote on a primary or a runoff day, um, depending on how you're registered, depending where you live. Depending on whether you have candidates running in your party and. And so, like I said at the beginning, you've got to have a superhuman level of interest in this process to participate. And it doesn't have to be that way, we could have a system like a top two primary system where everybody's on the same ballot and you only have two elections. Not three and everybody is welcome to vote in both elections. Um, I think those are ways that we could correct it from a policy perspective, from a elected official's perspective and the way you. Conduct yourself, I think you can be more transparent and more proactive and I try to do that through social media. And any other method I have to try to get people interested and engaged, but. It's always feels like kind of a losing battle because people, you know, just, it's, they're not that interested. And if they are interested in politics at all and they reserve some time in their life to care about politics, they usually care about national politics. Ironically, that's the level of government that probably affects you the least, you know, unless we go to war, you know, World War Three, you know, the national government. Um, affects you a lot less than your city government and your state government where your core services are are provided and so I wish people could. Have the same level of interest um in the state and local governments that they do in watching Fox News and MSNBC all day long.
What do you see as being the three most significant challenges facing Oklahoma in the next five years?
Well, you know, um, obviously our economy still needs to turn around, that would help government services and revenues. Um, that's still a major challenge for us, you know, our, um, this is kind of interrelated in some ways, but you know, I think our education system is. Is disappointing us right now and and our, our ability to fund it is a big reason why, so I mean, I think economy, education. Are big things and um, you know, I think um, I think our legislature is is. Really, well, I should say the whole state government is is, it's a challenge in and of itself, you know, we've really got to. Um, get some leadership uh at the state level that um, you know, is setting forth a vision and has the. Ability to to execute it and start leading us somewhere, you know, I I feel as if as a state that we've been kind of adrift for a long time. At the city level here in Oklahoma City, I think we have a very clear direction and obviously in my other pursuit. Uh, as a candidate for mayor, I'm trying to continue that, that strong direction. Um, and but so, but we've already got that in place, um, here at the state level. Um, we have a, you know, an election coming up in two thousand and eighteen where we'll elect a new governor and uh. And that's gonna be really critical decision for this state and will uh, uh, will kind of set us on a path uh of success or failure for the next eight years. Most likely and we've just gotta take that seriously as a people. And uh, and so I'd say, you know, the economy, education system. And our state government is is our biggest challenges, we've, we've got to get the state government on track and and have it be productive and. And working in hand with the people of Oklahoma to make Oklahoma a better place.
What can regular, everyday Oklahomans do to help address those challenges?
Yeah, well, you know, the economy is is a big uh challenge and and it's not, i- it's not something you can, you know. Necessarily say, go out today and make the economy better, you know, uh. Uh, obviously commodity prices are a big part of what what has challenged us the last few years and there's little you can do about that, that's a global. Global trend, I think as a state, we can continue to try to diversify and. And uh, and some of that involves tax policy and tax credit policy and people need to probably understand that better, I mean, I get a lot of people telling me. Almost within the same sentence, you know, hey, we need to diversify our economy away from energy and we need to get rid of all those tax credits and, you know, you try to explain, well. The reason you have those tax credits for aerospace and all these other things is that you were trying to use the government's power to diversify the economy and. So, you know, maybe there are ways that people can can help the economy grow by being supportive of of the methods we have at our disposal to diversify. Uh, and maybe people can try to be entrepreneurs, although that's a lot to ask sometimes, you know, it's a big sacrifice uh for people, but obviously. That's one way we grow our economy is to continue to be innovative and and have people go out there and take the risks that have always. Um, been the driving force for economic growth. Um, on the education system, you know, I think uh, there's no question we need more funding and that we need uh better teacher pay is. Is one major component of that and that's very topical and timely right now and I tell people, you know, tell your legislator. That you want teacher pay and education funding to be their top priority and that you're willing to support that legislator if they go outside of their comfort zone. Which probably what I really mean by that is that they're willing to support some new revenues, you know, whatever that means, maybe it's the cigarette tax, maybe it's. Um, you know, broadening the sales tax base, you know, but whatever it is, you know, we're, we're really not. Um, realistically able to find the resources for those things in our current budget and uh. And so I I really try to encourage people to get engaged in the political process to help the education uh system and then, you know, and the last thing. Uh, the the challenge of the state government, you know, obviously, that's, that's an easy answer, get politically engaged and and vote and be a part of. Um, this process and obviously let's fix this is certainly leading the way.
Thanks so much for your time, Senator, this is a really great um to kind of hear your perspective on. The state of affairs at the Capitol and what we as regular folks can do here in the Capitol. Good luck on your campaign and we hope to visit with you more soon. Okay, and that brings us to the end of this episode of Let's Pod This. Don't forget that Monday, September twenty fifth, we will be at the Capitol beginning at nine AM and we'll try to be there all day. Uh, from what I've heard, the legislature will be uh kind of uh gaveling in for special session around one thirty in the afternoon, so. Hope you're around, um, give us a holler on social media if you're gonna be there. As a reminder, you can connect with us on Twitter and Instagram at, at Let's Fix This Okay. You can like our Facebook page at facebook dot com slash Let's Fix This Okay. Or on our website, let'sfixthisokay.org. Our podcast is edited and produced by myself and mostly Harmless Media. And our theme music is graciously provided by local heroes, your friends and mine, the sugar free all-stars. Let's Fix This is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization, which strives to educate and equip all Oklahomans to engage with their government. We encourage you to get involved in any way you can, remember, decisions are made by those who show up, have a great week.